Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 16th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, City of Bellingham. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to silence electronic devices, if you've got them, cell phones. There's not a lot of people here, for those of you watching on TV, so it should be fine. Heather, can you please call the roll?
Holly Tai Chi.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Tom Grinstad.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
Phyllis Mickey.
Here.
Lisa Anderson.
And we have a new Planning Commission member who will be attending our next meeting, but not, we don't need to get into that this time. Okay, we'll talk about that later. Okay, so we do have three sets of, three sets of minutes? Four sets of minutes? Yes, we do have all three. One of them was set out a little bit late, but I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to review those. And so unless there's comment on any of the minutes, I think we can do just a head nod of approval on all three concurrently. Yep, okay. Minutes are approved, so we'll move through that. And we will have, there's two items on tonight's agenda. One is a public hearing to consider minor amendments to the land use development ordinance. And the second item is a work session, it's a continuation of a work session we had last month on the subdivision ordinance. And that's why you see this table setup. We'll move down to the tables after the public hearing and have a dialogue with staff during our work session. But right now, we're going to have a public comment period, and this is an opportunity for anyone here to speak about anything that is not related to the public hearing I just described, or the work session I just described. So, it looks like we have one individual who wants to make a comment, and that's great. Lynda, you know the drills, come on down.
Hi, Lynda Twitchell with the Building Industry Association. I just wanted to thank Jeff publicly for his service. He has been one of the city officials we've worked with over the years who is willing to ask all the tough questions, and if they aren't always the questions I'd ask, that's okay. I appreciate that approach that you guys take, that you're willing to look into what you think will work best and what won't, and ask questions and be direct and so forth. So, thank you much.
Thank you. And I think we should note that, the reason we have an empty seat and a new member is because Jeff Brown is no longer Planning Commissioner. He put in his time, and we do appreciate that very much, and I think that staff probably feels the same way. And we're going to have a chance to maybe, after the meeting, talk a little more about that. Okay, so Jeff, you want to say something? Public comment period?
No.
All right.
I talked it out.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so let's move into our public hearing. And Kurt, are you going to do the presentation on that? Okay, so that's regarding minor amendments to land use development ordinance, and we'll let Kurt take it away.
Good evening. Kurt Habefelt, Planning and Community Development Department. I'm sorry to say you'll all have to focus on one side of the wall. We've had some problems with our projectors over the last week to get those running, so you'll be able to look up here and see that. As mentioned, we are holding a public hearing tonight to discuss some minor amendments to our land use development code. You may recall that we brought the running list to you back in September 22nd, 2016, to kind of look at exactly what topics were on the list, and which ones should be moving forward at this period. Just a little background on the running list and exactly what it is. The running list is a way to record, retain, and consolidate amendments. Over the years, and over the months and days that we work with the code, we come across things that maybe need a little more clarification, maybe it's not exactly the way that we wanted the code to be interpreted, maybe something new came up. And so, we create a list. The folks that can create this list, or add to the list, our staff through the Planning Director, the Planning Director can add those on to the list. The Mayor can also ask to have some of these code changes on the list. Additionally, our City Council can vote to move something on the list, and you yourself, the Planning Commission, can also vote to move something on to the list. Some people may ask, well, why do you have it? It's a great way, again, to retain these requests. Over the years, we have people asking us about different changes and different items that we should be addressing, and this list helps consolidate those. It helps them get them all into one spot. It's also an efficient use of time. Amending the land use development ordinance is a pretty lengthy process. Obviously, there's multiple public hearings associated with it. We have a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and then we also have a public hearing with the City Council. Drafting ordinances, having those ordinances reviewed by our attorneys, making sure they're all ready to go, drafting staff reports and getting them here, doing the public notice to get comments on the public, as well as our Department of Commerce, State Department of Commerce. They all have the opportunity to weigh in on development codes' changes. So, that's a pretty lengthy process. So, this, in creating a running list and taking these through once a year, or sometimes two times, three times a year, depending on staff resources, it's a great way to consolidate all of that process. Currently, our running list is one page. We've just kind of, with our new Director, Suppler, I guess he's not new anymore, but this is one of the ideas that he brought forward with him. And at this point, we've got seven items that have been officially added on to the list. Three of those we'll be hearing tonight, a couple other ones that are in there, bulk and scale and historic districts. We heard from our Hearing Examiner recently as well about our conditional use criteria, and also SEPA appeals. So, the Hearing Examiner hears certain types of items over the course of the year and reports out to our City Council. And some of the items that she mentioned were these, that maybe we should look into a little bit more, and both the City Council and the Planning Director thought that they were appropriate to add on the list. Some items that we have discussed over the years are not on the list right now. One of those that I know that this, several members of this commission have made comments about is signs. Signs are actually on our work program in a bigger, larger-scale context. So, those are on our 2017-2018 work program, where we will be looking at it in a much bigger context. This one, instead of, we do have one tonight regarding signage in Fairhaven. This one was pretty small, seemed more appropriate to take it forward now versus the larger-scale signage review. So, that's the list that we have now. Tonight, we'll be holding a hearing on three items. Those three items are regarding fencing materials between residential and transitional zoning. Most like, most, this mostly occurs in our urban villages, where we've got residential transition zones that are about right next to usually high-intensive commercial zones. Our second item is unclassified uses in commercial and industrial zones. Many times, we get applicants that come forward, and they've got a certain type of use that they want to do in an industrial zone or a commercial zone. However, it's not explicitly noted in our zoning code as a permitted or not permitted use. And so, we have to make interpretations, and this item will help clarify that process. And then third, as I mentioned, the Fairhaven building mounting, mounted signage. So with that, we'll get right into them. The first amendment that we are bringing forward tonight is about fence materials between residential and transitional zoning. Generally, our code is pretty silent on fences and fence materials. And what this has generated is, we've had instances where we've got in these transitional zones where you've got a new commercial building right next to an existing single-family home, and chain link has been used in these areas. And so, one of the things that we wanted to make clear is that we didn't feel that chain link is an appropriate transition material between a commercial and industrial, or commercial and a residential use. So, we thought that it would be appropriate to bring forward this change, to try and blend that a little bit more between those two uses. One of the things that our codes talk about is fencing should integrate with the building. It should be designed in context with the types and styles of architectural materials that are being used. The colors should be similar. Initially, we had thought, well, wood is a pretty standard residential type of construction material, and we wanted to just require wood between these zones. We thought, well, if we limit ourselves, there may be this opportunity that something good comes along, and we felt that it was more appropriate to say what we didn't want. And then, and so specifically, we say that chain link should be used between these traditional zones. Now note, we don't allow, we do allow chain link between other uses, other commercial uses. Sometimes it is appropriate when you've got two commercial uses with slats and such that go in between those two, two uses. So, we're really kind of focusing on these transitional zones, not necessarily between commercial to commercial, but to commercial to residential. We believe by having, refining our codes, we can add the visual interest and detail and materials and color, and just make it a better overall site plan between the two different types of uses. Thinking we'll get into some questions on these afterwards. The actual prescribed code is in your packet. Generally, the ordinance gets into the details of the changes, and that is Attachment B, page 5, 6, 7 in the packet. Beyond that, our next one is unclassified uses in commercial and industrial zones. As I mentioned before, our codes don't list every single type of use that you can come across, or that you can think of, especially in this changing market. We've seen a lot of different types of uses recently being interpreted, and a lot of these typical industrial type of uses that you would think are, they're completely different now. Remember, our zoning code was drafted back in 1982. So, think about the types of industrial uses and commercial uses back in 1982, and compare them to today with all of these new technical, logical advantage, or advances that we've seen. So, big things have changed there, so all those uses are not necessarily listed. A really good example is a brewery. For a long time, we didn't have a brewery listed. We've got tons of those now. How did those get to where they are? Well, we had to look at them each individually. We didn't have great criteria associated with it, and so we said, well, we think this is pretty much the similar type of use, or we don't think that this is, this scale is going to be impactful in that area. So, yeah, we think we can go for it here. That obviously is not very consistent, it's not very standardized, and there are really no specific criteria to evaluate some of these things. So, one of the things that the code does is it establishes criteria that we can evaluate them to ensure that these new types of uses are similar in nature to the types of impacts that you would see in other types of industrial areas. So, we specifically said we need to evaluate traffic. How much traffic does this use generate? Is it similar to another industrial or commercial use? How much noise, light, orders? All of those things, we wanted to have that codified in there so that we could look at it, evaluate it against those, and make sure that we've got a good, clean, consistent process to evaluate these new uses. One of the items that the code does allow is it allows us to determine whether it's a permitted use or a conditional use. So, if you will recall, conditional uses are something that go, they're really kind of site-specific, they're intended to work within the existing code, but they're not a straight-up permitted use. They need a little more review to make sure that we're, that they're fitting appropriately with the context of the neighborhood. Those conditional uses go, they do have a public hearing. The Hearing Examiner then makes those decisions. One of the things that you'll see is that, if you recall, is that the Hearing Examiner said, hey, your conditional uses, maybe how you interpret that should probably be tweaked as well. So, this is a good, good example of where we're recommending that they go to this conditional use process, and also knowing that that conditional use process probably needs to be looked at and refined as well. Again, doing these, this amendment to allowing, to establish the process for the Director to determine where these uses go, it standardizes our interpretation, and it gives us the department something very easy to follow, very specific. It allows both the applicants to understand that. It also makes sure that staff and our legal department are all on the same page when we come to how we're making decisions here. Finally, we're looking at Fairhaven building mounted signage. One of the things that we did when we updated our Fairhaven neighborhood plan and created the urban villages, we tried to take our signs that used to go through a design review process. Well, that added a pretty lengthy process to just get a sign approved. So, when we adopted the new codes, we tried to standardize that. We tried to take all those criteria that we had before and kind of make it work a little bit better as a standard permitted review process, so you didn't have to go through that additional public hearing. We could just be straightforward with it in the code, and either you met it or you didn't. Well, unfortunately, we didn't get it right, and that's something that we realize with codes, and one of the reasons you go back in and look at codes. We realized that we did a pretty good job of getting the criteria for codes established, the criteria for signs established, but we didn't get it exactly right. We didn't allow for the size of these things. So, some of the signs that we have seen recently, we've received some comments and had some discussion internally about whether or not they're appropriate in scale and size, to the size of the tenant space and the overall pedestrian experience. Remember, our urban villages are really geared towards the pedestrian, so we've got specific landscaping design standards, we've got sidewalk design standards and street standards. But then if you get this very, very large sign over, overhead, it really kind of defeats a lot of those other things that we're trying to accomplish there. So, we believe adopting some more specific definitive and prescriptive rules will help us here, especially from when it comes to signs. So, part of the proposal includes limiting building mounted signage per tenant to 12 square feet in area, making sure that they're rectangular in, rectilinear, excuse me, in context with the buildings, because many of those buildings are that way, they're squares and standards. However, we also realize that signage is a unique thing, and it can add a lot to the pedestrian experience. And so, we've allowed some differentiation to occur in these. And you can see that in this example down here, where incorporating some part of the logo into the, into the sign makes sense. It's a good sign, it can add a value. It's when these things become much larger than the sign or the sign name is where we've had some concern expressed. We also wanted to make sure that it's emphasizing the facade and designed in a similar nature to the, to the design of the building. We adopted a lot of design standards when it comes to building facades and the types of buildings that you can build in Fairhaven, and we wanted to make sure that those signs stayed consistent and comparable and compatible with all those other material design standards for the facade. Obviously, we've got some height issues, and we wanted to make sure that there was adequate room between the building as well as the sidewalk below, so we've added some prescriptive, eight feet from the ground. We believe now, this will, this will help both staff and the applicant, it gives them a little bit more predictability, it sells exactly what their maximum sizes are, where before, they didn't really know what their maximum size was. They, they just decided, well, we think this sign is appropriate. And we believe that our existing code just didn't do that enough at this point, so we wanted to add to it a little bit more. And that's where we got that 12, 12 square feet. Another component of the Fairhaven signage regulations is that all exterior signage is limited to a total of 100 square feet in a tenant spot, and before, that didn't include building mounted signage. It wasn't clear, is it, is it 100 per sign? Is it 100? Does it include the, the building wall? Building mounted signage, does it include the monument sign? So, we added the clarifying language in there to make sure that all signage is encapsulated into that maximum of 100 square feet. Oh, that is not supposed to be there. Didn't get deleted. That actually comes, that's the end of my presentation on this. I wanted to, I can answer, we can answer any specific questions right now, or we can go into some public comment period.
You know, since there's so few people here, I think we should just take public comment first, and that way, we can, you know, if there is anyone who comments, we hear that as well, and then we can have a discussion. Thanks, Kurt.
You bet.
Looks a lot like my, my office, that slide. So, this is a public hearing, so we will provide an opportunity for public comment on these topics. And so, if anyone is here who would like to, we'll open that now. So, if anyone's here who'd like to comment on any of the three items that Kurt discussed, you can come down to the microphone, we'll give you a couple minutes, four minutes, to talk about any of these topics and pose any questions you have. And so with that, we'll open it up. Is there anybody who would like to speak to any of these three items that Kurt was discussing? Do you want to go down there and speak about them? Nope? Hold on. We're going to do the public hearing first and take comment. Nobody? Okay, so with that, we'll close the public comment portion and move into questions from the commission, and I know Tom has a question. Tom, you want to take us away?
I got a two or three or 12.
Actually, sorry, Tom, before you start, I was just thinking about this. Sorry. I think we should pick these off one at a time, so we're not jumping back and forth on staff. So, why don't we start in order? And I think you had fencing first, and then, so, and then, if you have questions, comments on multiple, we'll just wait till we get to the next one. And with that, I will give it back to you.
Okay, this has, it's of the format. On page two of the draft ordinance, on line number nine, it says recommendations as shown in Exhibit A. Does that mean Attachment A instead?
Yeah, we can, we'll make that, definitely. Thank you.
Okay. That was just a typo, or whatever you want to call it. So, we're going to start with the fencing, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Kurt, are there any transitional zones that are not associated with urban villages?
We do have, well, the transitional, the term transitional is specific to our urban villages. So, we've got residential transitional zones, but it...
So, if that's specific, then this is going to, this is going to be held only to the urban village borders, I guess is how I want to say it?
No, actually, actually, the way that it works is the first one, Section 2, at the bottom of that ordinance, it talks about BMC 2025070. So, that, that section right there is our design review section, so that's where we're adding it into the design review section. So, we'll have it there, as well as, the next one is our commercial zone. So, it will apply to all of the urban villages, yes.
Then I have a question about materials. You've said that you guys don't like chain link. There's no reason given for it, but, you know, if, if I designed a building with corrugated metal zinc siding, and I wanted to put chain link there, you know, that's going to pretty much match my building, you're telling me that I can't do that, period, end of sentence, is that correct?
Correct. Between residential and commercial zones, correct.
Would hog wire be allowed? Do you know what that is? It's the galvanized stuff that's about four-inch square wire?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, looking at the materials that you're using in your building, metal in this case, hence your, the link to the chain link, I think there are other types of metal fencing materials out there that would be more appropriate. But we felt that the chain link was one that definitely wasn't in this time. And that, again, that was based on some complaints that we had heard from public in some of these new zones.
I'm going to play devil's advocate here. You've heard of Frank Gehry, famous architect. In the 80s or late 70s, he designed his house and used chain link all over the place. If he did a building with a lot of chain link, you're going to tell him that he can't use it on the dividing line between residential transition and commercial, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you guys are playing, playing the same, same game. And I think that's it, what I've got for fencing.
Thanks, Tom. Does anybody else have a comment? Garrett?
Is there anything in the code to address existing fences? You know, if there's an existing chain link fence, straddles the property line?
There isn't, no, there's nothing that would deal with existing. Well, if it was existing and it wasn't being proposed to be changed or modified, it would be hard, we would be hard-pressed, I believe, to actually require a teardown of that fence and a rebuild of a new one. I think in that case, we'd probably really look towards our landscaping and try to buffer it that way. That's actually one of the, one of the main cases behind this, is we had an instance where chain link was allowed, and we couldn't say no to it. And we ended up trying to buffer it, but the buffering ended up being, you know, you've got, the way that the site is, is you've got your, your parking lot, and then you've got a landscaping buffer, and then you had the fencing. So, well, we tried to buffer it, and you couldn't really buffer between the landscaping, and we tried to have the fence set back and then buffer on that other side. So, that resulted unfortunately in a little bit less developable area on that new site. So, in this case, we figured, well, instead of trying to buffer that, let's just get rid of that type of material.
Well, do we need to add, do you think we need to add language that addresses existing fences? I guess, if you, if you took a fence that was existing chain link, and, you know, there is value there, I mean, somebody spent money to put that up, and it was, say, six inches off the property line on the side that was going to be developed. I mean, if you were to interpret the code, does that become a non-conforming fence? And then, I mean, you're saying we probably couldn't, but if, if somebody said, that fence has to go, it's non-conforming prior to your development permit.
It would, it would be non-conforming to our design standards, and the way that that, the way that our code is set up is essentially allows the Director to apply the, the new standards when applicable. And our general take on that is if, if you're touching it and you're, you're making changes to it, then you need to comply with the standards. In this case, you know, if they weren't touching it, we wouldn't be able to really require it to be modified. If the Planning Commission wants to make a recommendation with us how to deal with nonconformity in that case, we're happy to, happy to entertain something like that.
Is there language in the code that deals with nonconformity, where somebody can go and say, you know, this is my interpretation, this is an existing non-conforming fence, I think it should remain, and I don't think we need to add language if that's in there, but if it's not, then it might be worth doing.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very good point. Our existing code doesn't say you have to completely, when you're, when you've got a new development happening there, there are, a lot of times you'll have an existing house or an existing building, and people come and add on to that. And our code doesn't allow us to deal with that nonconformity now, unless they get in there and they start touching it and moving it and making changes to it, then we've got that ability to do it, so. Just crafting it, that's, it's a hard one, because you're really trying to, what we're trying to do is buffer and reduce the impact of a certain type of material in these transition zones, and those non-conforming fences are probably going to be on the property line already. So, having, what that means is we end up having to require the buffering on the other side of the fence, which is probably on the neighbor's side, which doesn't really make a lot of sense. So, it's a really good point, how we deal with it, that's, that's a tough one for these nonconforming aspects.
Well, if anybody else has any other thoughts on that?
Steve, yeah?
In the case of a chain link fence, and there was a storm, or there was a vehicle accident that took out part of it, at what point, 100%, 50%, 25%, would the owner have to comply with the new regulations? at what point, 100%, 50%, 25%, would the owner have to comply with the new regulations and remove the entire fence?
Good question.
Our current code, that's a very challenging question that you asked there. Because our current code would say that the fence is non-conforming to design standards. And any change to that, the director has the ability to acquire modifications. So our standard, when it comes to non-conformity, is 50%. If you go over 50%, then either you conform, or you go to the hearing examiner for the ability to rebuild. Under 50% of demolition of the structure, you would be allowed to rebuild. However, because it's design review, I think we'd have the ability to at least have some modifications when it comes to that.
Doesn't, doesn't the non-conforming code say that if something's damaged by like, act of God type stuff, that you get to rebuild it? Or is that more, that's not design standard?
No, uh-uh. It's in, I think there's some specific sections in our, in our other codes that reference that. I don't recall whether or not that's actually in our non-conforming section, though.
Lisa?
So I appreciate two of my topics got touched on, but I just, as far as whether or not there is a suitable time for chain link fencing, because we had discussed previously in September about view corridors for safety. A solid fencing or perhaps landscape may not be appropriate for like a drive or something where there may be a sidewalk. So it's good to know that something like hog wire or something that could be framed in, which would allow viewing. So I'm glad to know that that would be allowed. And then also, as far as if there's damage, I was wondering about that. But the last thing I'd like to touch on is that if, like, construction is happening, or there is a, a safety issue, maybe fire or something, a lot of times temporary fencing is put up. And often, chain link panels are rented, and they're pretty inexpensive overall. Is there anything that would prohibit that use for a temporary installment in this part of the fencing design?
There's nothing in our code that would prohibit it. These, these rules are really talking about new development. So temporary fencing, construction-type fencing, that's not covered in the design standards. So we would be able to allow that type of temporary protective fencing in those cases, yes.
Phyllis?
It's not uncommon to do chain link fencing around schools in residential areas. Would this, how would this apply? I mean, they want to be able to see through.
This would not relate there.
Thank you.
Any other comments on fencing? All right. Of course, when and if a motion is made on the overall package, we can have more discussion if someone feels like they want to circle back to something. But with that, let's move on to the second topic, which is unclassified uses that Kurt presented on. Is there anybody who has comments on this particular topic? Phyllis?
Yes, on the page with 20.24.020B3 on our packet for tonight, it says that the proposed use would not generate greater vehicular traffic levels, noise, light, so on. In other words, this sounds like if there was any impact at all, positive or negative, that it might be considered not permissible. And I'm, I'm thinking about particularly the greater vehicular traffic levels. Something might be put in that would, that would indeed generate greater traffic because of, in greater business. And that's not necessarily a negative thing. I was just wondering how this was thought about when they were putting it in. It seems very much to that one side.
Well, what we wanted to make sure is that we allowed uses that were similar in nature and similar impacts associated with it. So if you've got, if you've got a similar, two different uses that are similar in nature, then we just didn't, we didn't want to make su, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have something that was way above and beyond, and really look at those impacts. So in our industrial zones, there's a, there really are a lot of different types of uses in there. And those all generate different amounts of traffic. So if you look at all of those in an industrial, we're probably going to have a high end and a low end. What we don't want to do is, we don't want to make sure that we're putting in a business that does more than what's typical in these uses. I'm trying to think of a, of a, a good one. I was going to try and use a, like a air freight terminal UPS-type truck, where you've got trucks coming and going, but those are allowed in our industrial uses. A really high generating traffic type of use. We wanted to make sure that it was similar in nature to all those other ones. So having that, that wide range gives us quite a bit of flexibility to ensure that it's not.
So it may add to the total numbers, but it's just in keeping with what's around it?
Correct, yeah, we're, yeah, it's, having an impact is, is okay. It's allowed, as, as long as it's a permitted use. We just want to make sure that it's, it's that impact is similar to the types of uses that are already permitted in the zone.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment on this one? I had one question. On section A, where it describes, 2024-020A describes the process, really. I'm wondering what are the appeal options when the director makes their determination? And is that captured in that reference to 2110-270?
It is, it's essentially, it's, this is a, it's considered a type one decision. So we would issue like a findings of fact, and then the applicant would have the ability to appeal that.
Yeah, so if they didn't like the determination, there's their standard 14-day appeal period.
Standard 14-day appeal period, that would, the hearing examiner would determine.
Okay, I thought that's what that was, I just wanted to understand that. Thank you. Anybody else on this particular topic? Garrett?
Just in this, kind of the same line of thought, with, when we're talking about procedures for the interpretation, is there a time, time limit for the response? Or, I mean, if you make, you make your, you write your letter, you ask, you make your inquiry?
Type one, with all of our, the standard time limit for our permit, most of our permit decisions is 120 days from the time of the date of complete application. With our type ones, we, we try to not take that long. Typically, a type one decision is something that we try to do within the first 28 days, which is our standard determination of completeness time. So we really strive to make sure that we get that decision out in 28 days. A lot of times, we'll see these come forward with a building permit application. You've got a builder that submits a building permit, that has a specific type of use. It doesn't really match, we try to figure out how it is. We'll send a letter back that says, "Hey, can you explain your use? What exactly does it mean?" So we try to make that decision within that building permit review timeframe. Most of those are either seven days or 28 days. So we're really trying to make the interpretation in the context in which it's being reviewed, which is typically the building permit. So I can't, I can't say every, you know, every situation will be that way, but our standard processing is the, is 120 days. I would be willing to bet 95% of the time, we are, we are done way before that. So with these, because they're type one, we really focus on trying to get them out quicker.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. So we'll move to the third item, which is the Fairhaven Building Mounted Sinage topic. And does anybody have any questions or comments on that topic?
I do.
You do?
The slide that you did, Kurt, were, were those signs, all those signs conforming? That you showed on?
Yes, they are. And we actually, we actually included, the two pictures that I showed are actually included in the ordinance. So we're hoping that that will provide examples. That's one of the things that we're trying to do with our code, is to, to show more pictures of what we're trying to get. So we can say, like this, this is what we're trying to get. And it gives people when they're reading it. So yes, both those two signs are conforming to the code, and they're included in the actual code itself.
The 100 square foot max, that's per building? Total? Is that?
Correct, yeah. You can see that actually on page 2, 3, 4. It's right below the, the graphic of the historic district area, that number two there. "Total gross area of all permanent exterior signs, including the wall-mounted for any one building."
Regardless of how many tenants there are?
Yes.
And the size?
100 square feet per building.
That's what, 10 by 10? Am I my math right? Is there any concern that you might have a six-story building? It's a whole block, has 10 square feet, I mean, 10 by 10 signage allowance?
When we analyzed this, we didn't think that that would be an issue. We thought that the 100 square foot would be able to accommodate everything out there. So one of the things that, we do have the options on those full block types of buildings is we can make determinations that you've got separate buildings. I think that's one thing that we could do, where we've got these step-down portions, where you've got these kind of modules. That's something that we could look at as well, if, if it was these full block scenarios that someone ran into some issues with this.
Got you. Anybody else? Steve?
On going to your comp plan goals and policies on page three, under policy CP13. Can you tell me, what is, how does staff encourage and discourage any applicant from taking any position? I don't understand encourage and discourage.
Well, I, I think, remember the, the context of our, our goals and policies are kind of to set that overarching standard and that vision. And then our codes are supposed to, are supposed to implement those goals and policies. So this code, with the language of making sure that it's pedestrian scale, it's architecturally compatible, encourages signs to be complimentary in scale. So the, the code, the proposed language of the code is actually encouraging the signs to be complimentary in scale. That's, that's our development rules and regulations are supposed to implement these goals and policies.
Okay, the third bulleted item, encourage replacement of pole signs with a monument and prohibit new pole signs. Going over to the code, under the historical district, you allow pole signs?
We do in certain cases. Remember, the, the context of the comprehensive plan goals are overarching. They don't apply everywhere. A good example of where we had this is we had the, to prohibit the new, new pole signs. We've done that in other urban villages, where we specifically, like our downtown core, we no longer allow pole signs in those areas. We encourage these, or we actually require now monument signage to occur.
I'm still confused. If I come to you with a project, I want to do a pole sign 60 feet, I can put it in, in the historical district? Fairhaven, according to this, according to your policy, you're prohibiting?
Well, keep in mind, the, the policies don't necessarily apply to a building permit, the codes do. So what we're adopting here is what applies, not the policies. There's a difference between our overarching comprehensive plan goals and policies and our development regulations. The development regulations implement those comp plan goals and policies. So in this case, I believe... Right, so in this case, you could do a pole sign. However, a pole sign shall be mounted on at least two posts. So it's not your, your typical single pole, it's two, it's two poles. So in that terms, it becomes more of a monument sign than a single pole sign?
Well, I, you're saying in the policies to encourage and pro, encourage replacement and prohibit new signs. I think that's very misleading.
Sure, and I think the, the, well, the context of this code and, and those policies don't necessarily apply to every type of zoning in every situation. When we did the rules and regulations for the urban village plan, through that, that process, it was discussed and determined that these types of pole signs would be okay, as long as they had two standard poles versus a single one. And again, the context here was, we were really, we weren't focusing on all signage of, of the Fairhaven neighborhood. We were really just focusing on that building-mounted signage at this point. So the scope was a little bit different.
Thank you.
Garrett?
I just, kind of going back to the 100 square feet, if you have, you know, there's not a lot of large undeveloped parcels left, but if you take like the pit that's across from Fairhaven Village Green, that conceivably could be a fairly large building with multiple tenants. If it's limited to 100 square feet total, I'm just wondering if that's enough? When you're taking the two frontages that that has, you're trying to lease a building, and there's tenants in there that can't get signage because you've already hit your 100 square feet. Do you have a way that you can put, you know, a linear footage mechanism in there that would allow for more signage if there was spacing of a certain footage?
We don't at this point, no.
Do you think that that could be a concern on that particular site?
Well, the Fairhaven code was adopted 2012, I think. And we've had multiple buildings, pretty, some pretty large buildings built down there. And it's, hasn't been an issue since then. And again, that goes back to, we're really looking at the, the wall-mounted signage here. So when we did our analysis, we had some of our several, our staff signage experts review it and looked at examples already down there. And that's where we came up with that 12, and thought that this would work just fine for allowing appropriate signage and, and scale in these buildings.
All right, thanks.
Tom?
Yeah, kind of question. You've added for, item number four, projecting signs, and struck out item number four, building-mounted signs. Does that mean that in the Fairhaven district, all the flush-mounted wall signs are now regulated only by the sign ordinance?
Correct, or the existing rules and regulations. So if, if you, if you look at the, many of the items that were already in the building-mounted signage, we, we struck it all out, but we brought a lot of that over into the projecting signage, projecting signs. So with those, we, that's where we really saw the concern out there, was these projecting signs, not necessarily on-the-building signs. When you're on the building, it provides a completely different experience from the pedestrian as you're walking down, when you've got a sign that goes along the building versus a sign that's coming over the top of you. And so that's what we were really focusing on, the projecting signs here and there. The, the standard building-mounted signs would be lumped into that 100 square feet overall.
Okay, and using Garrett's example of the pit there, across from Fairhaven Village Green, that has a frontage on 11th, and on Mill, and on 10th. So if that was one building, we could theoretically take the frontage for those three rights-of-way to determine the, the amount of signage that would be allowed on that building, is that correct?
Yep, it's building signage, it's total.
And would, I know I'm getting into the weeds here, but would only one projecting sign be allowed on a building that size?
No. No, you can, each tenant can have its own projecting signs, or you can combine tenant, multiple tenants into one signage as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yep.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody? I had a couple. Well, just a comment, I'm glad that you included neon signs. I think that's important, I was worried that that was going to go away.
No, we had, we actually, when we did the, the urban village plan down there, we had a lengthy discussion on neon signage down there, and so...
It's been around a long time.
Yep. Yep. Exactly.
Um, and also I had a question about what is a halo sign? I'm not aware, I don't understand what a halo sign is, and halo signs are permitted, or prohibited, pardon me. Is a halo sign like a defined type of sign?
Yes.
Through?
Not through it, but you have a dark, like a...
Oh, sorry, Mike.
You can explain.
Yep, no, you got it, you're exactly right.
I understand what you're saying now.
It's like you have a dark H and you have a light behind it, and it shines through, so you see like a blue light and then a solid black H.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you said help, it would be like three, four colors, that type of...
That makes sense.
Right.
So, my only other comment is on, circling back to what Steve was talking about, this item three, the monument or pole sign, more just understanding that. So, it says either sign, I'm assuming that means either the monument or the pole sign, shall not exceed sixty square feet per face or six feet in height measured from existing grade. So, if I want to have a pole sign that's taller than six feet, I can do that because it's an or, but it would be limited to sixty square feet per face. Is that correct?
The context in which that is written, or the intended use, is that it's a, it's a both. It's not, you don't get to do one or the other.
You don't get to do sixty square feet?
You get sixty square feet or six feet. Either sign shall not exceed, so you can't go more than sixty square feet, and you can't go more than six feet in height.
And so, but that's, that's either sign, monument or pole. So, you're saying you can't have a pole sign that exceeds six feet above the existing grade?
Correct.
That's not really a pole sign. Right? I mean, that, and that kind of maybe gets your, like, maybe resolves your issue, I'm not sure. But what you're saying is you can have a monument sign that touches the ground, or you can have a monument sign that sits on little short stubby posts, but not really a pole sign. Okay, I just, I read that and I went, that, that reads like six feet is the max, period. And, okay. Do you think that there could be confusion because of the use of the word or? Because really, it says either sign shall not exceed sixty square feet per face and shall not exceed six feet in height measured from existing grade?
We can definitely have our legal department look at that and determine appropriate language.
It's fun with me, you know, I just, you know how, you know how it goes. Or and should, shall, that tends to create problems for people and...
Yeah, no, I agree, and, and obviously, the, um, we're always trying to, um, clarify the terminology wherever we can, so...
I don't have an issue with the effect of that, that six-foot cap. I just want to make sure that you don't present yourselves with interpretation issues down the road.
Yeah, no.
So, I, I'm not recommending any change, but if you find that, then I would recommend, you know, if your legal is concerned about that, then you might be better to clarify that.
Yeah, no, whether the commission gives us, um, guidance on that or not, we'll definitely ask our legal interpret, our legal department for interpretation. And if they suggest a, a different change, um, then we'll make sure that that's presented at the council.
Phyllis?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think that if there was a, were to be a comma after the word face, then the or is gonna take on that other, either orth, if it, but if with no comma in there, you're looking at or is inclusive.
That's a good point, so...
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
That's my only comment, I know how it goes sometimes.
Code is very, very tough to write.
Yeah. Little, it's amazing what one little word can, can do down the road. Anybody else?
But does the legal department have an English teacher on staff? And why not?
Right.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so unless there's more comment or discussion, um, we can make a motion? Lisa?
I move that we accept these three with the suggested punctuation changes.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I'm gonna restate that. So, the motion is to accept the, the three changes, effectively the findings of fact, conclusions and recommendations, um, from the two thousand sixteen, uh, pardon me, March sixteenth, two thousand seventeen staff report. Uh, and I guess, if modified, and recommend approval. So, is there any further discussion on that? Alright, if none, let's, uh, let's have a vote. And I'm not gonna restate it because it was two seconds ago that I stated it. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, uh, motion passes six-zero. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kurt. Is, is the intent to try and bring this kind of stuff forward semi-annually?
Yeah, um, our intent is to, um, is to, we've, we've talked about this in a long, for a lot of, a lot of years. Um, and having Rick come in and actually provide this structure for us works so much better for us. Um, it actually allows us to ensure that it goes on to our work program every year and we allocate time for it. Um, where, um, if it's not there as this, the standing item, we end up looking and weighing the pros and cons of, well, do we do this one or do we do that one? Um, so, our intent is definitely to bring these forward, um, more consistently so that we can keep up with our code, um, versus having a nineteen eighty-two code that, um, we change every ten years. So, that's the, the, the hope is that this process will allow us to, um, include it in our work pram, program every year, uh, to make these changes and make sure we allocate appropriate staff for the topic.
Great, I think it's a good idea. And if you let too many of them accumulate, it becomes unmanageable to process them all.
Exactly.
So, it's, it's nice to get them in smaller chunks like that. Okay, so with that, we are done with the public hearing and the first item, and we can move into the work session on, um, the subdivision ordinance. And, yeah, I think we should, we're gonna come down. So, let's take like a five-minute break, and, uh, it's seven fifty-eight, let's, let's reconvene at eight oh five. So, a seven-minute break. Thanks. Okay, so we've shifted venue slightly. Um, and we are now gonna kick into our work session, uh, continuation of the discussion about the subdivision ordinance. And, um, the last time we were here to talk about this, I think there was only four planning commissioners. And what we, and not everybody was here. So, just to recap, the idea is that this is more of a dialogue about the individual chapters, so we can ask questions of staff and kind of work through things collaboratively. It's not a hearing or anything like that, we'll get there at the end. And we can take as much time as we need with these. And what we did at the last meeting was we just went chapter by chapter. We skipped this second or third chapter because it was a pretty meaty one, and, um, that was the standards. And Kathy, do you want to explain why? Because I think you did a good job of explaining why, because the, or maybe I can just try and you can chime in if you think I've got it wrong. But the idea was that those, the standards apply, kind of, to all of the different, development types, subdivisions, lotline adjustments, et cetera. So, it makes sense to go through each individual development type first, so we understand them all. And then we have better context on the standards or the criteria. Is that, is that fair? Yeah. And, uh, so, um, I think we're just gonna kind of keep going. And I know that, that for those of you who weren't here, you may have comments on chapters that we've already talked about, and I don't know if we want to circle back at the very end with those. That might be, like, at the very end of all of our work sessions. That might be easier, so we're not...
I think it'd be a great opportunity.
Yeah.
Keep the momentum forward and then come back around.
Exactly, and then when we're done, and then I've also, th- there's just a few people in the audience, so, uh, instead of taking, um, comment for three minutes at the beginning, I, I want to extend the opportunity for them to just raise their hand and, and, and appoint within the process if they have a question or a comment and just participate in that way, which is a little bit less formal, which is what this is all about. And that way, we can address those comments when we're talking about a specific topic. So, hopefully that's okay with everybody. I'm gonna ask Kurt if that was okay, and he seemed to think that'd be a good approach, too. So, with that, should we get going?
Okay.
Yeah.
Am I too far away from this? Do you think, did you hear that? Okay. It's not often people say they can't hear me very well. Um, so, just to give a recap, um, and Ollie, you did a great job. On January twelfth, we held a work session, and in that work session, I had a cover memo that, uh, staff presented to you, and I've somewhat summarized that again in this packet tonight. And, and at the January twelfth, uh, work session, we covered the general provisions, lotline adjustments and shorten cluster, uh, short subdivisions. This, this evening, um, the hope or goal is to continue in that path, exactly what Ollie suggested. And the idea behind this is that there are some general concepts to subdivisions, and then there are specific subdivision, if you'll include lotline adjustments and subdivisions. But there are certain types of subdivision or plating or adjustment. And in order to understand when we start talking about lot widths and, um, area and stuff like that, hopefully by going through each process type, we'll have a better understanding. When we say for short plats, you have to have this much lot width, you'll, you'll at least begin to kind of draw it all together. This is a very technical code provision, and it's not unlike some of those that you just heard previous to this, when we talk about signage and height and area. But when you start to talk about land, it, it seems to be a little bit more complex because there's a lot of other elements that will come into this in terms of infrastructure, stormwater, and just a lot of different components. So, you're not just looking at a piece of wood that is a specific size, whether it projects or is flat. Ground's not flat in Bellingham anymore, and it has many other features to it. The ground's not flat in Bellingham anymore, and it has many other features to it. So it, it can get somewhat complex from that perspective. And as I've, as I've offered before, if there is anyone outside of this that would like to have a discussion of just going through and looking at some examples, just so you can gain a further understanding of what we're talking about, to assist you, more than happy to do that. And actually, we did that with Steve, and I think Steve found that to be beneficial. So always open and willing to take that opportunity. So going through real quickly, just on the PowerPoint, for what we covered last time, and then where we will go today, is we gave a background of where we are, and who, where we've been, and where we're going, and all the different groups that we met with in order to get to where we are today, presenting that we are repealing and replacing the existing ordinance, while there may be still be a lot of the concepts and ideas, there will not be much that is not untouched, meaning pretty much the whole thing is brand new, but in intent and concept, a lot of it is the same. We talked a lot about the key changes, and some of these were key issues, thank you, Steve, were key issues that were identified by staff and out of those previous work groups and steering committees that we had. And then we talked about, generally, there are three different categories, if you will, within these regulations, and there are general provisions that cover subdivisions in general, that's why they're called general provisions. There are processes that are specific to each type, and then there are standards. So if we can get there this evening, we will have discussed the general provisions and the processes, and hopefully next be able to go into standards. And if we don't get through all the processes tonight, then the next one will, will definitely jump into the standards. And we talked about the layout, it's just a little bit reorganized. We're trying to, for our benefit as well as the user's benefit, to further define the process, make it a lot more clear to understand, a lot more predictability. And we gave the website for those who are out in the public, if they wanted to look at the updates as to where all this information is. And then we went through the general provisions, we went through the lot line adjustments, the short plats, and now we're at preliminary plats. So hopefully, we can just start off where we were. As a short update, we did receive a public comment letter from the BIA of Waukesha County, and we will be incorporating their comments into a comment tracker. And the concept is that, that these comments and any other comments that we receive in response to the working draft, and through these work sessions, we will incorporate into the comment tracker and be able to identify how, how those comments are addressed in the draft ordinance that will come forward to the planning commission for hearing. So the changes that you have, or the, the working draft that you have does not incorporate any of these changes or recommendations at this point. And the intent, as Ollie stated, is to get through this, work through this, take public comment, take comment from the planning commissioners, and try to work towards that draft ordinance. So with that, these, the slides in the PowerPoint are intended to identify those issues that were either presented or identified by the working groups or by staff, and they're the key changes to the draft, or the working draft that you have before you. So as we discussed with preliminary plat, or with short plats and cluster plats, currently in our, in our subdivision ordinance right now, cluster is its own chapter. And when we discussed that with short plats, it was generally agreed that we should bring respectively, the cluster provision as it's applicable to the short subdivisions into the short subdivision chapter, and we would like to follow the same path here and put the cluster provisions as they apply to preliminary plats in the preliminary plat chapter. And that just brings in a little bit of different applicability statements, what the purpose statements are, and some different development standards that will go into that chapter. So those have been incorporated in here. So by way of page 26, if we look at line 22, so under 1816-01082, it says utilize a cluster subdivision provisions for five or more. That's one example of where now this is in the preliminary plat section, where before that would have been under the cluster provision. So some of the, it's incorporated, it's embedded within. Any questions on that? And after we kind of give the highlight of the changes, we can always come back for, you know, specific comments. Last time, we went through almost line by line, section by section. We can do that again if we want, or we can just cover the big issues, but maybe we'll try to cover the big issues and see how many of the other issues exist, if that seems This, this was an issue that was presented with, we're just going to jump right into it. This was an issue that was presented to the steering committee, and it was presented by staff for a discussion topic. And the concept here, or the concern here, has to do with the time or the length that a preliminary plat can be valid for, and trying to establish some set of guidelines or standards that would provide some predictability to the public for infrastructure, for open space dedications, and also pay some respect to the fact that some of our development regulations change over time. All other permit applications either have a two or a five-year life, and they're done, meaning they expire. Preliminary plats right now are a little bit unique in that you can get approval for a preliminary plat. And what our provisions say is that you can come in for a final plat, which is the approval of, say, 10 lots and 100 lot plat. And you have to do that final plat within five years. And then what that does is that basically keeps your preliminary plat alive. So you can come in again within the next five years, and if you do 10 lots, you can continue to do that. So if you have 100 lots, that's 50 years. That a plat could be vested to the same regulations by which, under which the application was applied for. That's a long time. And we find there's not only the issues with the stormwater and the critical areas, but it's our planning changes. We, we have planning horizons of 20 years, not of 50 years. And there's needs that the public identifies through the comprehensive plan and the planning documents, and we don't necessarily have the ability under these scenarios with open-ended phasing to incorporate those provisions. So the idea here is that we have, for discussion purposes, put forward some unit counts, and to put forward limitations on how many phases you can do. With that, there is also a provision that if a developer, through an application, would like to extend that, they can do that, and then there's a, there's a review process for that.
Question, Kathy?
Yes.
Is there any place in the city that actually defines a preliminary plat?
Is there any place?
Yeah, you know, in-
The subdivision ordinance does? So a preliminary plat is a subdivision approval of 10 lots or more. So that's a preliminary plat. We've had plats up to 200 lots, we've had preliminary plats for 10 lots. So there, there's a wide range, and a lot of it depends on ownership and the consolidations of ownerships as, you know, they're, they're acquired. It depends on the densities of the land, of how many units they can have. So a preliminary plat is a subdivision. Am I answering your question?
Okay. So it's a subdivision, but until it's built, it's still a preliminary plat?
Yes. So a preliminary plat is exactly that. It is effectively a design, it is a concept plan that associated with it has development standards. So it would tell you what your open space requirements are, it would tell you what your minimum lot sizes are, it would tell you what your infrastructure needs are, if there are any easements required. It's, it's, it's a plat that has a preliminary design with conditions of approval. Once you fulfill those conditions of approval for a phase, which could be, right now, any number, so you install your infrastructure, you dedicate your open space, you put in your landscaping, your street trees, et cetera, and you fulfill your conditions of approval necessary to support that phase, then we go through the final plat process, which is the next chapter that we'll discuss. And then, once you receive final plat, it then establishes the preliminary plat valid for another five years. So every time you do a plat, it gives you that additional five years. So you need to do a final plat every five years to keep your preliminary plat alive. Sometimes they, we've had subdivisions come in with over 100 lots in one phase, done, within five years.
But D.R. Horton isn't building here anymore. So hypothetically, if we have another great recession, and nobody can scrape money from the banks to do something in, in five years, that preliminary plat is abandoned or null and void, is that correct?
The situation without phasing, that, that very situation occurred even when there weren't any phasing limitations, and the city came through and did an economic hardship. And then the state came through because it was so severe, and actually extended the preliminary plat from seven to nine to then 10 years. So if we ever get where we were again, my assumption would be that we would follow course and extend those time limitations, which would then, if the state changes it, we change it. Decision criteria. Similar to short plats, currently in the subdivision ordinance, the only decision, the only chapter that has decision criteria is lot line adjustments. And we've incorporated decision criteria into short plats, and also proposing to incorporate into preliminary plats, and the criteria is the same. So it was acceptable for short plats, I think there were some minor modifications, and we would assume those modifications would be applicable to the preliminary plat as well. And the basis for this, again, is for predictability, and also to give some basis for the hearing examiner to render a decision. And right now, it's, there's, what, what, really what the hearing examiner is doing right now is just fulfilling the minimum of the state's requirements. And those aren't even in our code either. So it's a matter of incorporating the states and adding a few other standards or decision criteria.
On the phasing, it says phase approval shall be limited to at least two phases. What's the thinking on, you requiring at least two phases, is it what your example of somebody coming in doing 100, you know, 100 homes in one phase, that wouldn't be permissible?
Is it on?
Yeah, it's on.
Is it working, though, through? Well, the way that this is currently limited is that, that it effectively would cap, it, it depends on how they choose to phase it, but each phase would be limited to more than 25 dwelling units. And then, or a land area, and eligible to receive, you know, approval in phases, and as a phase approval shall be limited to at least two, and shall not consist of more than four. So the four years is, is kind of the critical part, because that's the 20 years, which is maximum, which is the planning process. And that's when we look at, it's kind of the planning horizon of when we start to look at our long-range goals. And I guess after reading this, if they wanted to do it all in one, they could.
It seems like-
So, yeah, I don't know that it has to have a limit.
If you say a phase approval shall not consist of more than four phases-
Yeah, that's really what I think of.
-because if it's phased, by default, it's got at least two.
Right.
I think that's why it's just a little confusing.
Yep, nope, that's true.
But you can come in and do a project in one big phase.
Yes.
There's nothing that would prohibit that.
Right. So that's a good point, because this would actually prohibit that, so that's a good point.
So if you struck, shall be limited to at least two phases, and, it would read a little bit cleaner.
There, there was a lot of discussion, and it was mixed discussion with one of the steering committees that we had that was primarily comprised of developers. We, we understand the implications, they understood the need or the request, there were not solutions identified, and there were some mixed opinions of some, some felt that 20 years is the max you should have anyway, and there's some that wanted to however long it took to get to where they wanted to go. Because vesting is predictability, and we understand that. But at the same time, it's predictability for them, but it's not predictability for the public, because of the needs and the wants that may be identified as time goes on. So there will be a lot of conversation on both sides. This will, this is, this is a very, this will be a very big topic of conversation, and it's, and it's appropriately so, because it does, we understand the implications, but we're wrestling with how to meet both needs.
Completely agree with Kathy on that, and we understand the challenges associated with developing, and we understand, especially being, going through the 2006, '08, '07 economic challenges. So we, we realize that there is a need for that. There should be predictability for both the applicant as well as nearby property owners. So we, we understand it. We also have run across situations where we've got a preliminary plat that's, that's been done, that people have been working on, but then you adopt a infill toolkit, or you adopt something different, where that preliminary plat doesn't allow for that new housing form all of a sudden, and we've got issues with that. So how do we deal with that? So there's, there's a lot of different, there's pros and cons, obviously, for this, and I just think that one of the things that we've seen over the last 10, 15 years is that things change quickly. And there's, the ability to be able to change with that, such as the housing form, is a great opportunity, where our existing code doesn't necessarily allow that, without going back through a whole new process. When you're in these, when you're limiting these phases, we can definitely make sure that there's still predictability, but it allows us ability to move and, and grow and change.
I have a question on that. I'm a little, I understand the concept, and you're talking about having a 20-year cap, but I don't see where we're capturing the time limits in here. I don't understand that, what you're getting, I don't understand how we're getting to what you're talking about. This talks about no more than four phases, but it doesn't talk about how long phases go for anywhere?
Those are-
Is that just implied in the state law or something?
No, those are later on, when we start to talk about time limitations and what, what it, and it's in the final plat section. Final plat and preliminary plat, they, they merge very quickly together.
Okay, so, so when you're doing your preliminary plat, you propose a phasing plan, but the conditions for the timing out of the phases are contained in the final plat section?
Yes.
Okay. I was thinking, I was looking at that and wondering how we get there. And does that also talk about how long between, that talks about how long between phases?
Five years.
Five years. And that's in that final plat section?
Yeah. Yeah. So Title 21, right now, says a preliminary plat is valid for five years. And then the subdivision ordinance allows that time limitation to be extended an additional five years every time a preliminary plat is filed, which incorporates the ability to do phasing.
What was the thinking on cap, capping the number of, or limiting 25 homes or dwelling units for the availability of phasing?
We looked at some of the more recent- We looked at some of the more recent subdivisions that have come forward for preliminary plat, and we looked at some of the past that have come. We don't see many that are less than 20. And we don't see many that get into the 30s, 40s, or 50s. It's kind of, it's sort of an anomaly. And the amount of infrastructure, a lot of it is plat design because sometimes you have, if you're going to construct a road to a certain length, then typically you're going to bring lots on both sides online. So a lot of that depends on how far and how much infrastructure you're doing and what's on both sides. Sometimes they're single-loaded roads, so you'll build, infrastructure might have less lots, if that makes sense. So, but the cost of doing the infrastructure is the same. And so if a developer's only going to put so much money out to do that infrastructure, it may serve less lots as opposed to doing twice as much street for twice as many lots. So we sort of looked at what the average was, and it's not a mathematical, we didn't add up every single one, but it was sort of that reasonable in the middle of what we typically see. We've seen as little as five, which made us feel a little uneasy. But to address Tom's concern, it was during an economic hardship and it was simply the right thing to do. But we certainly don't want to do that all the time.
Yeah, I just wonder what this, I mean, that's assuming a scale of homes. If you said, you know, you had a 20-lot subdivision, preliminary plat, and the individual wanted to do it in, say, four phases, but he was building $3 million homes on, you know, where that might be applicable. It seems like it's, that's based, that number is just based on an assumption that it's going to be a medium, you know, size home.
And I think a lot of it is, if you look at the lands that we have left and you look at the ownership of what we have right now, they're owned by a few with very large land holdings. So it's, it's not like we have a lot of parcels out there that are under all these separate ownerships where we can envision that type of scenario. And that certainly has not been, historically, we have not seen that at all. So that, it would be, does the opportunity exist? The opportunity could be out there. Is it characteristic of Bellingham? No.
We'd come back, I was just thinking, I was just wondering.
No, it's a good point.
What the benefit of having the cap is, what the perceived benefit is.
The benefit of the cap is to try to identify a reasonable number of lots that could be brought online so that you could achieve a fairly large fate, or a large preliminary plat within an X amount of time, being 20 years. That's kind of been the target time to complete a preliminary plat, meaning getting all through the phases. So it may be, what I'm hearing for discussion, is it's not necessarily how you get there. It's more of when you get there. I think is sort of where I'm reading you, Garrett.
Thanks.
I think we're trying to find a reasonable timeframe, trying to accommodate both the development economic realities of building large scale, but we also want to make sure that it's not forever. And that's the way it is right now. And so we're trying to find that happy medium to do this. And when we started looking at it, Kathy obviously did a lot of research on what we've seen historically, but we also, I think, just to reiterate what she said, was looking at how we do our comprehensive planning. That's our long, long-range planning. We're doing 20-year plans. So trying to, somewhere being in that, that relationship of our standard planning processes made the most sense, at least as a starting point.
Have you guys thought about a minimum number of units per phase? Does that ever come up? I mean, in theory, someone could have 25 lots and propose a 20-lot Phase 1, and then a 1-lot Phase 2, and a 1-lot Phase 3, and a 1-lot Phase 4. And I don't say someone would do that, but.
But the time limit, the end game is still the same.
Yeah.
And that, and so really.
That's really what's important to you, is protecting the end.
The number of phasing is what's ending, so there's a direct relationship, at least what we have right now, is to the number of allowed phasing, phases, and the life of the preliminary plat. So clearly, flexibility in the number of lots. It's not, it just isn't really, yeah, I mean, the 25 was a number for discussion purposes. It could be higher, it could be lower, and maybe it's not necessary, and maybe it's a phasing.
I don't mind a number, but if the intent is to protect a backend, the number's less important.
Yep.
And maybe lower number would be better. I could see someone wanting to do 20 lots in two phases, and they'd be prohibited from doing that. So if they were at 20 lots, they'd have to do it in one phase.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going, I agree with that. You're assuming some economic scale there, you know, where if you had a smaller, medium-sized, you know, developer, the financial impact or the benefit of phasing is in proportion to the size of that, you know, company.
If we can protect the backend through the number of total phases in a cap, it sounds like there's a cap on how far out you can take it. I just think the number of, the total number just to get in the door is less important.
I do too.
So more flexibility might be better. I think there is a low-end cap in my mind. You don't want someone phasing out a project two lots at a time. That seems kind of funky to me. I don't know where the sweet spot is, but I just, when I, I had a note that said 25 seems high.
We, we have some subdivisions in the city that are on the path for 50 years.
Yeah, we don't want that, I get that.
Before they complete their preliminary plat.
Larger ones, though, right?
Yeah. And the amount of changes we've seen in that time, the amount of work that's being done to develop those. And we're seeing in some areas, depending on where growth is going, roads that were identified as arterials and for reasons are no longer in our comp plan as arterials. And we're seeing roads that weren't identified as arterials that are now listed as arterials. And as the parks and recreation, open space changes, how do we incorporate those kinds of elements? So as we grow, we change. And in some way, it's how, how can these decisions be flexible to also incorporate those changes?
It just, yeah, okay, it sounds like the 25 number isn't really the driving factor there. It's the, it's the open-ended timeframe of phasing. So we could.
Maybe we circle back to that, once we see what the final plat language should talk about.
Okay. So moving on to decision criteria, which is on page 28. Again, those are the same criteria that we had in the short plat section. And we'll make the same appropriate provisions, changes that we did there. A lot of these just goes through the process. It's very similar to the format and the layout that we've put to our other chapters in terms of what staff's role is, what the decision-maker role, and what the effect of the decision is. The time limitations, which is O7O, which is the next one that has, which is, has some significant changes from what's in there today. Right now, the ability to request a time extension. So if your preliminary plat was ready to expire, whether you've completed a phase or not, the criteria is very vague at best and it doesn't offer a lot of predictability for the developer or the city to be able to determine, should an extension be granted? So what this does is it offers a little bit more definitive criteria for the city to evaluate, and it establishes a timeframe by which that request needs to be submitted. So there's some, there's some responsibility on the property owner or the, or the owner of the preliminary plat, however you want to say that, to be mindful of the time as to when they may be, you know, when the preliminary plat may be expiring. But what it really does is it gives staff enough time to be able to process this so we don't have happened what's happened in the last year, and that is to get requests literally weeks before the plat is ready to expire. Because that's not really putting anybody in a good situation, and we want to avoid that. So 90 days seem to be a reasonable time. We believe that the developer at that point will know if they need the extension or not. And it just, again, it gives everybody sufficient time to be able to review.
On that one, sorry. Does the state have language about that as well?
No.
So when we went from the five to the seven at the state level, was that related to final?
No, the state just extended the time limitations or how long decisions were valid for, approvals were valid for. We didn't, we didn't have any authority in that.
Gotcha, so then they've made that seven?
Well, it's all over the board. It was seven, it was nine, it was 10, and then the last time they came back. And it depends on when your preliminary plat was approved. So the older, yeah, so it depends on what time to give you, more time during the good economic situation to be able to come in now and do, do your development.
So, so if you have, you submit a preliminary plat, you're not done with it. You've got how many years to get it done?
Five.
Five.
Plus the ability to do a one-year extension.
Have you guys thought about providing two years?
A two-year extension?
Yeah.
It, no, because honestly, it happens so infrequently. This last year was really ironic, and we had some really big subdivisions that had not received any development, meaning there had been no final plats. And it was probably very much so a sign of, or, you know, it was a cause of the economic downturn. But it doesn't happen. I mean, very rarely do we get extensions, but when we do, they're always a bugger. And so this is trying to, this is, this is planning for the 5%, but it'll make that 5% a really much more enjoyable 5% than what we have today.
And it's really paperwork. It's not, you're not building infrastructure because you don't have your preliminary plat yet. So typically, you might need an extension to do some more design or file some more permits. It's not like you need more time to finish building infrastructure.
You might be halfway through your infrastructure and you just need more time to finish it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that doesn't happen very often?
No. We have good developers.
Yes.
They know their time.
I think, I think it's good to have a 90-day, you know, period that they have to make that request, give reasonable review time. Is there a 90-day review time from the city? That if, say, an applicant makes a request for an extension two years prior, for whatever reason they decide to do that, can they expect a response within 90 days from the city, a determination?
Well, if they did it two years prior, I, that would be really odd.
They'd have a hard time meeting that criteria, which says that they have to, yeah.
Yeah. Because they got two more time, two more years to go.
So is this implying, though, that you will get, within 90 days, you would get a response?
If, if somebody is, is applying for an extension and they give us ample time, we will definitely give them ample time either way. Because if for some reason it was no, then there's, there's something that's going to have to happen really quick. I mean, these are typically those either, these are usually not good situations. Something has happened and we, if infrastructure's built or under construction, it's going to be very difficult. This is set up to let those continue to be successes. It's not meant for the situation where you now have 30 days, you've done nothing. You don't have your civils, you don't have anything, and you come in and say, "I want a bond for everything." That's not a situation we want to be in, and it's really hard to say what is your good faith without anything else there to help support that. So those are the rare situations, but like I said, we've received quite a few of those this year. But they're typically, they move forward very quickly.
And I think also what Garrett's getting at is, if I came in 90 days out and applied for an extension and the city dilly-dallyed and didn't respond for 120 days, my expiration would be stayed by my request. You couldn't be like, "Oh, we didn't get back to you in time and now you've expired."
This does not say that, but I would imagine there would be a nice claim that would come.
Yeah, I don't see it explicit, but I would imagine the same would be true. So the intent would be, it's a good-faith effort to get back in time.
We understand the implications of what this request is. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly where I was going. Just if there was some uncouth developer around who came in at 91 days and requested an extension, and the entire planning department thought he had bad body odor or something, you know, you guys just really were against him. And you dilly-dallyed to 128 days and said, "Tough luck." I just want to have, you know, the assurance that that's not going to happen.
I wonder, I mean, could, on subsection B, could you say, "Prior to expiration, the director shall take one of the following actions"? I mean, that makes it explicit that the city has to respond before.
I think that's a good ad.
Before it expires. Prior to expiration, the director shall take one of the following actions. I know you're going to do it, but that just provides that backend protection.
I mean, the other scenario is, it's going to put more onus, though, on the developer is that if you make it a Type 1, there's 120 days, but then they're submitting, and for the guaranteed timeframe, but then they're submitting 120 days prior, which is a long time, because a lot can happen in 120 days.
I see.
And it hasn't, to date, been necessary. And like I said, this is just a, they're usually not surprises when they're under construction. We know what's happening. We're usually in dialogue. Public Works is in dialogue. I mean, we know when they're not going to get there. And typically, we give extensions and then they make them. They make their timelines. But it's just that, it's that insurance.
Small percentage.
Yes. Okay. So moving on, this gets somewhat to what Kurt was saying earlier. And this is modifications to approve preliminary plat. This is brand new, definitely open for discussion. And I encourage and want, we want the discussion on this. And effectively, there's two, there's two different, there's two different modifications. One is a modification to a preliminary plat that's still valid. The other is a modification to a previously approved plat that proposes inconsistencies with the approved preliminary plat. For example, you approved all single-family lots, standard, traditional, single-family lots, that for whatever reason, your preliminary plat condition said every lot has to be, have a minimum width of 60 feet. You're in a cluster zone that allows a minimum lot width under the subdivision regulations to go 40 feet. Rather than go back through a new application, because it's not a plat alteration, because that's to a final plat. So rather than go through a new application to try to help them maintain within this timeframe for vesting. So again, keeping in mind, while we're shortening, we're providing more opportunity that they can come in to potentially respond and to propose inconsistencies to their approved preliminary plat, but yet still keep within the general parameters of what their preliminary plat approval was. For example, there's a specific subdivision in town that has very steep slopes. And the idea that we have been trying to wrestle with, or the concepts or ideas that we've been discussing are, can we take the same unit count? Keep the same housing form, single-family detached, but allow the lots to be smaller, a little narrower, still be consistent with zoning, but there may be inconsistencies with your preliminary plat approval. It's, sometimes we have preliminary plats that have requirements for roads that we deem are no longer necessary to be constructed. But it says the road shall be built. So can, this gives us that opportunity to actually have criteria to make the decision rather than this internal, just willy-nilly, you know, no criteria of how we can approve those changes. So again, it provides some, it provides some guidance as to the degree of what a minor amendment is, where we don't have that right now. And really, the limitation right now is we allow minor modifications only for like minor surveying, engineering, but not just good design. minor surveying, engineering, but not just good design, not new layouts, not, you know, just different ideas.
For that example that you just cited with the steep slopes and smaller lot sizes, do you feel like this modification criteria would allow that kind of modification?
Yes, yes.
Because it's not changing the, it's not inconsistent with the plat, because it's not changing the housing form, it's not changing the underlying density, it's just changing lot size and width?
Yes. And the benefit to the public is coming into consistent, is coming into more compliance with some of the very issues we've discussed as to the critical areas, stormwater, and those types of things.
I think this is the one that, that staff has seen a lot of requests for and a lot of concern and issue over the last 10 years. And as Kathy noted, our current code does have some language that allows for these modifications, but they're very, very limited. And when you're developing 40 acres on these larger scales, that preliminary plat is very, they don't have all of the specific details down. When you get in and you start doing a, a phase, you're in there, you're, you're constructing streets, you might run into rock, you might run into something that you didn't know was there before, and you want to be able to, to move, move it and tweak it, tweak your plat a little bit. Well, our existing language doesn't really give us any guidance or criteria to do that, and it's really limiting in what we can allow without having to go back through this whole process. So this staff feels really strongly about this, and I think that it came up in, in both of our, or all of our work sessions and steering committees, is that they felt that this is something that we definitely need to help facilitate that, that little bit of flexibility here. But it's still giving us criteria to ensure the surrounding, the property owners and the neighbors that it's still going to be generally consistent with it, but, yeah, so.
Is if there is inconsistencies, go to, you can apply for a modification through a type 2 process, which is hearing examiner, or?
No, it's administrative, but it requires notice.
Right. Neighborhood, neighborhood notice.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, that's a good ad. I mean, that, that's, that whole chapter is a really good ad.
We kind of, on, kind of touched into what I was concerned about was, you know, if it's greenfield, there's not a, you know, it's not adjacent to a current neighborhood or development. It's not as, you know, the, the value of changing is, the impact's not going to be great to, say, a neighbor. But I, my concern would be some of these, what might be considered minor adjustments could maybe have a, a major impact on, you know, property of budding, you know, with an existing home. So these type of changes, if somebody requested something, that hopefully would be one of the first things that would be examined, is to see what kind of impact the adjacent property would have. And then that, that, maybe that process would be where notification, all of that would be triggered. Would that be a correct assumption?
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's two different modifications that could be requested. One, one is truly minor modifications, but you're still consistent, you don't present any inconsistencies with your approval. But you, you might want to take a cul-de-sac, or take a through road and make it a cul-de-sac because of new findings. Like, we've had that situation where they, they did test pits all around, but forgot the cul-de-sac bulb, and when they actually went out there to start to do a little bit more engineering, realized that there was just a ginormous rock outcropping. And for them to build the cul-de, I mean, the through road and that concept was just not reasonable, it wasn't feasible, so they amended it by doing a cul-de-sac. We didn't really have good criteria by which to evaluate that. That was not inconsistent with the hearing examiner's decision or the preliminary plat approval. But if you were proposing those inconsistencies, then you, you need to give something back for those, which means that's giving back something to the public, but then also notifying through the type 2 process that there are these inconsistencies.
So what I'm envisioning, the concern would be a smaller lot size, which would condense, you know, the single-family housing in a, a smaller footprint of an area in order to maybe avoid a, a wetland or a large rock outcropping, but you have adjacent to that, you know, maybe three houses. And so now you've shifted some of the, you know, although not huge, but some of that density may be closer to that property line, and there's noise and light and other type of mitigation issues that might affect those properties. So would something like that be taken into consideration before you would go into a smaller lot size and maybe put those houses in a closer, you know, proximity together? Does, does that make sense?
No, it, it makes, it makes total sense. And ti- ti- typical developments, at least within the developments, they build in progression. So where these modifications happen will happen in the next progression. They don't happen within an existing built, or within an existing neighborhood that they just built. So there, these modifications would be incorporated to that next phase or a new neighborhood. Where on the perimeter, we start to look at those issues and what the conflict is to existing established neighborhoods, that's a really good point. And I think that we have the ability through the comprehensive plan, the Bellingham Municipal Code, where we talk about transitioning of lot sizes and we talk about compatibility of existing neighborhoods with new neighborhoods. So we have the ability to draw those in. If, if you think there is something that we need more specific for a criteria, I, I think that there's value and merit in that as well.
In Lisa's example, though, that would trigger the type 2 process, which would mean there would be a public notification to those people.
Correct, right.
So if that level of change happened, it'd fall under this B, right?
Yes.
And, and I had a clarifying question on that. These are, A and B are both for plats that have received preliminary plat approval that are in that in-between stage before they get final plat approval.
Or there may have been one or two phases approved, then it's the next phase, but it's still in a preliminary plat, yes.
So, so it's, these are really for the same period in the project, it's just this, A is for like more minor, it's a scoping thing, like A is for simple stuff and B. I think you might want to reword the first sentence of B to match A, because I was a little confused by that. It makes, when you say, "Minor modifications to an approved preliminary plat that is still valid," and then B, you say, "Modifications to a previously approved plat," and it's confused, it was confusing to me, like, does, I, I am not trying to get down in the weeds, but if, if B read, "Modifications to an approved preliminary plat that is still valid," that propose, then, then it's like, it's very clear for everybody that these apply to the exact same phase, it's just the scope that's different. Because when I first read B, I thought that meant final plat. I got really confused. I was like, is this later on, or is this the same time period?
Okay.
That make sense?
Yes, 100%.
And Lisa, I had the same question Lisa had, actually, but you answered it about the scoping. I also agree with Garrett that it's a great ad to provide administrative flexibility, generally.
So that completes the preliminary plat. That was, like, is it really only eight o'clock?
Well, I have more questions, sorry.
No, that's okay. It was just one of those moments of where I was feeling much more tired than eight o'clock. Because you, I know, but it was just, sorry.
Just, I just had a couple minor questions. On the first page, line 42, in accordance with BMC 2030-030, the infill toolkit uses pursuant to the provisions of chapter 2028, which is the toolkit, are permitted in cluster preliminary plats. So I don't understand the reference to 2030-030. What is that?
We are going to modify Title 20 to allow that as a permitted use, is the concept and idea.
That, what we're getting at here is that if you have...
You can do infill toolkits in cluster zones.
In cluster or planned zones, yeah?
Well, yeah.
Cluster or planned use qualifier, gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
I, I thought that's what that said, and I just wasn't sure.
Yes.
Okay. And then the last thing was, I noticed on 1816-020, so second page.
Can I back up again for a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is where, without the benefit of having the discussion of the standards, because we don't want line 42 to be construed as just infill toolkits are just going to be permitted everywhere in, in cluster zones. There, there are standards that go with that.
Yeah.
To protect and to provide transition areas and compliance with other BMC sections. So without the...
And we get to that, we'll see it.
Yeah, so without the benefit of seeing that, this isn't saying that you can now do infill toolkit everywhere in the city of Bellingham. So that, that's where the rest will come to fill that gap.
You're referencing the standards there.
No.
No.
No, we, we have to amend the single-family section and land use ordinance to allow infill toolkit uses, and it will say something of the effect, infill toolkit uses are allowed within subdivisions in cluster zones.
I see.
That, that's, and, and those will come.
Yeah. 2030 is the residential single section.
Exactly.
Okay, that's where I was, I didn't put that together.
Yeah, because right now it's not permitted to do infill.
So you're, you're, you're going to make an amendment to 2030 that's going to clarify which single-family zones that would be permitted?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you may recall, it's probably two planning, two work sessions ago where we actually showed a map that showed where those cluster zones were. It's, it's, it's pretty limited, but we thought it was an opportunity because the, the cluster zoning, the existing cluster zoning already allows for smaller lot sizes than normal, it already allows for attached dwelling units in, in similar areas. So we felt, well, allowing the toolkit in these areas that already allow this type of development, the attached development or the smaller lot size, made sense, and mainly because our toolkit's got some really good design standards associated with it. So we felt that in these areas, we could probably even get better development than what our standard cluster areas would allow now.
With an opportunity to achieve densities, because you're putting in more and less space.
So my only other one was on page two of that section, which was 1816-020. And on line 28, it says, "Notice of the preliminary plat application in the same form as required by Title 21 BMC shall also be sent to the following," and you list out like electrical, telephone, gas, cable. I mean, we have changing technology. I would prefer you say, "All applicable utility purveyors."
Straight out of the state subdivision regulations.
This?
Yep.
Do we have to do that? Because it seems completely, I mean, we don't even have internet on here. The internet provider is not listed.
It is straight out of it.
It just makes no sense to me. Okay, well, if we have...
Do you want to add more?
Well, I mean, I'd rather just consolidate them, but I know if we can't do that, I'm, I don't really care. I just look, I see those things and I'm reading through, like, why do we not have?
We could add "or other applicable," I mean, if you add that.
Yeah.
So the, the beautiful part about that is that state subdivision laws still use, like, the word swamp.
Yeah, I saw that.
So there's some, you know, it, there, there's some things that haven't been brought along with the times.
Okay, well, that explains why, why it says those. That's it. Does anybody else have comment on this particular section? And obviously, we'll have opportunities to circle back throughout this whole process if we need to. The wonky, the wonky ones. Okay.
Do you want to take a public comment?
Do we want to take a break, or do we want to just go into final plat? I think it would be good to go into final plat, because it's pretty, goes pretty smoothly. If everyone's comfortable with that, keep it moving. Is that okay?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I think Kathy raises a good point, and kind of goes back to what you were talking about earlier about public comments. So that preliminary plat section's pretty big. Do you want to allow maybe an opportunity there for...
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this section we just discussed? Keep in mind that there's, there'll be ample opportunity throughout the process. So if you don't feel like you have a comment right now and you come up with one later, you can always come back to it. Linda, Eve? Nope? All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we are going to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's only eight.
We have a, do we have an objective chapter that we're trying to get through?
No.
No, we're stopping no later than 10:00 PM. So one more hour, max. Unless you want to keep going.
Oh, I was, I was sort of thinking the opposite, since we have, since we have two friendly, well, one ex-planning commissioner, one almost ex-planning commissioner that I thought we were going to.
Oh, well, maybe we should stop, maybe we should...
I think that it's maybe, my thought is maybe we do final plats, because it is, it's very relevant to preliminary plat. It shouldn't take too much time.
Yeah, and then we call it a day.
I think a lot of the discussion that we thought that we would have around that phasing kind of already happened.
Okay.
So...
Well, no, I just was thinking of the 10 as a backend, so if we want to wrap it sooner, I'm totally okay with that, and if everyone else is, unless someone really wants to push it to the bell.
No, I think we can get through final plats and call it.
All right. Thanks for sharing your opinion on that with us, I appreciate that.
So, final plat is, it, it's, it's a, it's, it's sort of the end game. And there's a lot that happens between preliminary plat and final plat. And as we discussed very briefly, this is where the money comes in to developing a piece of property, and this is where there's a lot of expenses that are laid out on the line. So in, in my, in, in the city's opinion, time is of the essence to get to that final plat approval, those MyLars being recorded in the most expeditious manner once it's been determined by all departments that the applicable conditions of approval have been met. That, that's the end goal. The current regulations are at best vague. The state regulations could be interpreted as being vague as to what the time limitations are. So what is proposed in this chapter effectively is to establish some criteria as to what needs to happen in order to forward a recommendation to city council that the conditions have been met. And how this is proposed in this version of the working draft is that a, as they go through construction and identifying what property transfers will be, what easements are necessary, the checkprints of the plat, which are, checkprints of the plat are preliminary copies of the, of the actual Mylar document that will be recorded. That as we are going through and essentially checking off when the conditions of approval are met, parks may be the first to say, "All parks' conditions have been met, sign the MyLars." Public Works may be the next, say, "Sign the MyLars." And then planning says, "Okay, we're good, sign the MyLars." Then we go to council for our 30 days. What happens right now is we do our best guess as to when they're completed, we go to council, MyLars either come in or they don't when we are in that 30-day council process. And then sometimes the MyLars are ready and signed after the council's approval, sometimes they're not submitted, but then they get routed, they get routed for city signature. And that takes time. So the concept and the idea is, as the departments say they're ready, that their signature on that Mylar is the required recommendation to the city council, who has the authority to approve final plats, that the preliminary plat conditions have been met. So it's doing the work on the front end, when there are no expectations, that they have this council approval of a resolution, which really is just a very routine process. Having said that, there is a bill going forward with the state that is, and I have to say, it's about time, and whoever presented this should be a hero. They are considering giving final plat approval to the administrative personnel who's in charge of the subdivision ordinance, which means it would be the planning director. So that in itself is a month of time saved, which is so key and so critical. So the, the saving grace that we have is while they're going through the final plat process, they can submit for building permits. So when the MyLars are recorded, then building permits are ready to be issued. So it's not like... So it's not like you have to get final plat, then apply for your building permit, and then go through that review process. So we've consolidated processes, we would continue to maintain that consolidated review process.
Is that, is that just kind of policy?
Which, allowing.
Buying building permits to come in before the lots are created.
Those would be the major, that would be the major bin because you don't have your land use enablement. So we allow that, it's not.
At the discretion or the risk of the applicant.
Yes.
Yeah, like you submit building permits and you fail on your final plat, that's your loss.
Yes.
Coming in early.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And that presents challenges that we need to perfect on the building permit end as to how to make that review process maybe a little more streamlined. Because it is clumsy at best because we are working with a planning document, document, which is a checkprint to the Mylar that is not perfected. And sometimes they do change, while not often, sometimes they do, and they'll have different measurements, which then cause another re-review. And it's just, it's kind of clumsy at best, but we're making it better every day.
How long do you think is an average from preliminary plat? And I know this probably depends on size and complexity, but what would you think is like a reasonable average from preliminary plat approval to getting issued final plat approval, how long does that take?
It all depends on the developer, truly.
Because let's just make an assumption that an applicant is very motivated, very organized, very diligent with meeting the conditions of the preliminary plat, engages as engineers, surveyors, gets everything to the city. There's never any time commitments on the city's end to say that we will review in this period of time. And I think things get busy, workloads are, you know. I could just see this taking a really long time with no recourse for an applicant to say, this is taking too long. And I'm just, without, and I hesitate to, for me to throw a number because I haven't been through the process on a big plat, but I've done small things, and it's fairly arbitrary. And it depends on who you may be working with, how, what their workload might be. I'm just wondering, this is our opportunity to try to improve this process, is there anything that we can do to add some time commitments or general parameters that an applicant can look at and say, you guys got to do your sixty days?
Yes, and we are proposing that, but we are not proposing that to be codified as absolutes. We are putting together a procedure manual that the intent is that all departments that are involved in planning, the directors would sign it, and their staff would be aware that this is our commitment to reviewing these proposals.
Is that, is that in-house information only, or is that?
It won't be once it's there, and clearly we can, yes. And that's the idea of what's worked, of, I can tell you how it goes right now in that. So again, there's so many different processes because to go from preliminary plat to final plat, typically there aren't any additional land use applications because those are all reviewed with the preliminary plat. But you have your public facilities contract agreement that includes all your infrastructure, and you have your stormwater report. So there's that review process. And we are fine tuning that process to get it much more expedited than it has been. I think the electric plan review is obviously helping tremendously because you don't have one set of plans that literally goes to eighteen different people, which you can imagine right there, the time that that takes through inner office. It all now is broadcasted to everybody at the same time. That has already been a great reduction of time.
There any, would there be any problem with not codifying time requirements from the municipality standpoint, but putting a reference into some sort of?
Policy and procedure manual?
Yeah, or, you know, time schedule, like you do your stormwater and they say, you know, it may say, okay, seven days, twenty-eight days. Building permit, twenty-eight days, this type of permit. And I know you, like you said, it's very dynamic, but some, something to keep everybody accountable. Because, you know, you do, you have public facilities contract, and then that goes to one department. And he could be working on something concurrently with what maybe the planning department is, but they're not, because they're not.
Right, and so what the subdivision ordinance can control are the subdivision applications. And there are these other processes that are out there that we are continuing to improve upon. The final plat process, it takes no more than thirty days because that's what state law says will be thirty days. And we generally meet our target within, it's earlier if not as much later. So we're meeting the thirty days, we meet the ninety days for the preliminary plat. I think we can attest there's one, or no, there's two, that we have not met, and they were ninety-one and ninety-two days. So the timelines from the subdivision perspective are being met. That I can, I know that.
And maybe think about a way to interject a reference to.
The policy and procedure.
Something that an applicant could go to the subdivision, because that's what he's working through, and say, are we being accountable to this?
Understood, and I can share with you that we had discussions as to whether or not, when you look across the state, some have them, some don't. And there are some that I have no idea how they can achieve their timelines. And are they setting themselves up for complete failure? And that, there's a concern there. And so that was the conversation with Kurt, and he's like, we do need to have those expectations. We all agree we need to have those expectations, but they don't have to be in code for those expectations to exist. They need to be there within the director level so that there's a buy-in of all. And that is being formulated as we do this as well. So totally agree, there are expectations.
One of the things that you may recall, I'm pretty sure we've briefed the planning commissioner over the years on this, is our commitment to the lean process improvement. And the mayor actually wanted us to look at our development review process and the public facilities contract. So that's, that's what we're talking about right now, that permit was one of those components that we evaluated in our lean process. And there were several recommendations that came out of that, and we've implemented some of those already. And some of them are waiting on, we've got new permit software that we just, we've had around for about a year, year and a half now. And we've got it implemented and up and running. And in order to make some of those other improvements that came along as recommendations in the PFC, we have to wait until our software can be changed and updated and modified. So those are out there, we know that, we've already got the recommendations, and we already went through the process in a, to, in a way to make, to lean our review up. So it's out there, we know it can be done, it's just getting everything else lined up to implement it. And the permitting software, the policy and procedure manner is the way that we would implement that.
Just, I mean, it's a great comment, and just to follow up on that a little bit. Like with a building permit, you've put these bins in place, right? So seven days, twenty days, that's not in the code, right?
Right, nope, correct.
But that's created an immense amount of predictability for the customer because they can go in and they walk out when they submit, and they get a piece of paper that says, and they can go on E-Track it online and see who's reviewed it and where. And I think something along those lines with PFCs and maybe checkprint review would be the only, I mean, really, in my experience at least, the two things where there's less, we don't really know, you know, because there is no policy in place, is the PFC review and then the checkprint review. And sometimes the checkprint review occurs in a week because it's like one thing, or the person's not busy. Other times, you just don't know. And so I agree, I don't, I agree that I don't, I don't see if it's necessary to put in here as long as there's that effort to, like you're doing with the building permits and the bins, to create that predictability for people. I mean, that's almost the most important thing, is to be able to walk away and go, I know how long they're going to commit to.
That's exactly, the kind of the bin concept was one of those things that we definitely talked a lot about when we did our PFC kaizen event. And that was one of the things, they, the public works department or the team created certain projects that are minor PFCs and major PFCs. So we're taking that concept of building permit, we're applying it, we're actually already doing it for some. But it's these bigger ones that we're, we're kind of waiting on these other changes to implement, so.
Can I ask a stupid Norski question?
Of course.
Is it, I was going to say, is it going to be your last one?
Final one?
Does final plat approval infer or actually demand that the infrastructure all be built and in place and tested and et cetera before the Mylar is signed?
If not, it is bonded for, and the state law does allow the opportunity for the city engineer to bond for certain infrastructure. And we, we do honor that. And the PFC process, which will be part of Title thirteen amendments, which are the streets, will also include, help define what those provisions are, but yet offer some flexibility to that as well.
Is there a time limit on the bond?
Public Works establishes those mostly, like what we do for, if it happens to be street trees, is we'll usually do it for less than a growing season. So if you get final plat in the middle of summer, we don't want you planting your trees. We're also finding that the smaller that the lots get, we don't want the trees installed anyway. So we either do it sort of on a rotating basis, that you do it with a home construction, or we'll do it all at once in the winter. So it's, it's really case by case of how we deal with that. And the hearing examiners have been flexible and open to those considerations, and it seems to be working well.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
You mentioned that there's a legislative action that would eliminate the council review. So what happens if that occurs? Do we just strike this eighteen twenty oh four oh section, or?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I have notes in mine as to, in my working draft is the sections potentially, but I don't know that oh four oh would be strike, but it would definitely be, yeah.
And the idea would be that legislative action would play out before we're done with this, maybe, hopefully?
Hopefully.
Because if we, because it would suck if we adopted this and like three weeks later, they took legislative action.
It would be retro, I mean, regardless, we would be able to, yeah, we'd be able to do that.
I was just thinking procedurally.
Kathy, do you know, my recollection of that, the Senate bill, is that it allows the local jurisdiction to do that. It doesn't outright permit it. So I think we would have to go, we'd have to come back and do an amendment to, because we'd want to have that discussion as a community.
Yeah.
Is there, I don't necessarily want to see the whole, I've read legislative manuscripts before, but is there kind of like a crib note to what the, or a cliff note to what the, this going forward is? So we have a better understanding of that?
Yeah, it says, there's one underline, basically. It says legislative authorities of cities, towns, and counties made by ordinance delegate final plat approval to an established planning commission or agency, which I think would be the hearing examiner as an agency potentially, or to such other administrative personnel in accordance with state law or local charter. So we would need to incorporate that, but that's the change. And the rest of the provisions of, and that is RCW fifty-eight seventeen.
So if that does get approved through the state, I would assume since it's listed several entities as being the authority for approval, would we by identifying who that would be? Or would we leave that type of language where it would be the planning director, the hearing commissioner? I mean, would we be determining which of those?
Well, if I, yes, and the, right now it limits it to the legislative authority. And there's some municipalities that do city council, there's some municipalities that do hearing examiner, and somehow there's one municipality that does a planning director. And when asked how that can be, they said, our attorney said that we could do that. And I said, well, that's really interesting because we would like to be able to consider it, so could he help us? But there was no further assistance with that.
Essentially, the legislation allows us as a community to determine if we want to, if we want to. Currently, it says you can have city council, the legislation allows us to determine whether or not we want someone else in the city council to do that.
Right, and final plat is really interesting because it is, it is not a decision by which you can further condition. It's really, it's a matter of are the conditions met? So it is really, it's a routine process that when staff goes forward with a recommendation to the agenda bill and the preliminary plat, or the final plat resolution, that all conditions have been met. In my experience of doing this, there has only been one time where the council members have been asked because of an issue that came from the public and that it was resolved. It's so routine now that it goes on consent agenda where there's not even any discussion. So it's a very just perfunctory role, and it's time, it really takes time to get there. And there's a lot of staff time to get there. It's just, it's really a question of, it's been a question for many years by many municipalities if it's necessary.
I may have seen that hearing where it was the one time that it came forward. So that's what I was thinking, is that opportunity for more eyes to look at something that might be controversial?
I think that if you, if you look at the way that the process is set up, is all that controversy is dealt with at the preliminary plat. Because all the difference, the preliminary plat sets out all of the standards, it sets out everything that the development has to be built to. That final plat just says, yep, they did what the preliminary plat said. And so it really is perfunctory. And as Kathy mentioned, the council doesn't have, really have the ability to change and modify at that point. Because the decision of what it is has already been made by the hearing examiner at that preliminary plat time.
Kathy, I just have one last question. Effective and approved final plat, eighteen twenty oh six oh, that's effectively the vesting discussion. And it talks about referencing RCW fifty-eight seventeen one seventy. And then there's a sentence after that that talks about the city council changing it if there's a serious threat to public health or safety. Is that state language?
No.
We added that?
Yes.
I'm a little concerned about that because to me, that politicize, there's the potential for that to politicize what is, what is a state statute about vesting? If, I could, I'm not saying this, this is going to happen, but let's say a group of constituents gets together and goes to a council member and politics that council member up and, you know, council people are elected, and they make decisions based on getting reelected a lot of the time. And they might then go out and say, oh, there's a serious threat to the public because a few people don't like it. I think we've seen things in the past where the council makes decisions based on a minority opinion. And are we opening ourselves up to the risk of eliminating vesting for people at the whim of a political body?
That's a good question.
I'm, I don't know, I read it and I went, that sounds very discretionary.
I also had that highlighted, and I kind of wanted to know if there was a good example that you could provide where a situation, this would be beneficial.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious too, like.
Concerns.
Like maybe like there's a landslide in a future phase, and it would be unsafe for the community to build a subdivision on that landslide. I was trying to think of like natural disasters, or what could pose a serious threat to the public health or safety. I don't, maybe we can come back to that, but that, I don't know, that concerns me because the state set this up so that you vest for a period of time. And I, I do not, I mean, council members come and go, politics change, and there's just a lot of discretion in that statement. And so I wouldn't mind maybe circling back to that next time and seeing, if you give you guys a chance to think about it a little bit, because I know that's probably a big question to answer in a, in a short period of time, and we're near the end. But to me, that warrants further discussion.
So on my end, when I read this, I was trying to think of an example that would work. And one of the few things, and I don't know if this would be very applicable, but given that, you know, in the past, some of these plats can linger for a tremendous amount of time. And then maybe something was approved, and then some type of standard may have changed. Like, you know, you think of pipeline safety. And so there may have been a federal determination that, you know, housing development must be set back. And maybe they've created a line that's further back from where that pipe is. And yet that development would be within that section, you know, within that, that range, you know, in case of fire explosions. So you'd want to be able to go back and say, because of this change situation, it's deemed that there's a public health and safety for building houses here. I mean, I could see something like that.
That's a good example.
But would it take going through city council in order to make that type of change? If we're giving decision-making to maybe the planning director, if the concern is that changing conditions or standards may deem something being a safety risk, does it have to go before city council to make that decision if that's your goal of putting this type of addition into here? Just something to think about. Just something to think about. I, I toyed with that too, wondering what, how would this apply? And what would be an example? So, I was kind of wondering if that was where your thought process was in having it in here? And if so, is city council appropriate? And if so, maybe a justification then versus another entity would be useful for me?
Or, or maybe more clear, clear criteria for that? Because I, I do believe that there could be situations where it would be inappropriate for the general public safety to proceed with something that we've approved. And I get that, and I'm not suggesting that's not the case, but I just, I don't like situations where we give a political elected body discretion that is not based on specific criteria. It just, I think it opens up a big, big can of worms. But we can circle back to that because I think your, your side of the question is very valid too, yeah. Anybody else have anything on this? No. All right. So, we made it through two more. That's good. I think we're doing good. Any comments from Linda or Dave at this time? Great. Okay, so maybe with that, we'll close the work session for tonight, and thank you guys for going through this in detail.
I think you should take a vote on that.
On whether we should close the work session?
No, that, it all sounds great.
It all sounds great. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
No motions from the public. All right, so that is it for the work session, and thank you guys, both Kurt and Kathy, because I know this is like heavy and Garrett and I getting down in the weeds probably because we've got some experiences. And Linda? Let me, let me ask that question to Kurt. Maybe Kurt, can you talk about how, or Kathy, can you talk about how we're going to move forward?
So, we have the next work session scheduled for April 6th, I believe, that was noticed.
Yeah.
And I would envision, are we the only item on that one as of right now? So, we will definitely be able to get through the majority of the next procedures, which will be binding site plans, plat alterations, vacations, variances, administrative departures. And then moving into the next work session to really talk about the meat and the bulk. There's still two, still two chapters that we owe you. And that would be the milar and survey standards, which are being developed. And those are really just, again, very technical. And then definitions, and we all agreed to wait for definitions at the end as we go through to see what questions come up. So, that being said, if we can complete work sessions April 1st of May, we should be to hearing by May, June. And then, you know, in part, the purpose of this process is to get the ability to have public comment, to get feedback through work sessions, to hopefully have very well-thought-out planned ordinance so that the hearing process moves through swifter. So, not having the work sessions after the hearing, but effectively having them before the hearing. So, and then we go on to city council, and then assuming they're going to want to do work sessions, for sure.
The question is, would there be work sessions after the public hearing if there was a need for them through comment? And we, I guess the answer is we don't have to vote the night of a public hearing, correct?
Oh, correct.
So, if it turned out that the public hearing generated concern, I think we get to make that decision as a body.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, and I think in the past, we've had situations where the public hearing occurred, and then we chose to continue on because it was warranted it. So, that, that may occur.
And/or you can provide direction to staff and bring, bring changes forward as well. So, yeah, there's a lot of different opportunities for how it can move forward.
Okay.
I mean, clearly, the idea is, is the work sessions are not to preclude public participation once the draft ordinance comes forward. That, that's not the purpose. The purpose is to have a very good draft.
Produce a good draft.
This would not be a good draft.
Yeah.
There are too many things that needed to be discussed. It's a good working draft. But, so that's the hope, is to get a good draft.
Yeah. Okay, so, the last thing, we've talked about our meeting. Last thing is, we're, we're going to celebrate two of our planning commissioners who have both put in two terms with the planning commission in a moment. But while we're still on the record, I'd just like to acknowledge Commissioner Jeff Brown is in the audience, and Commissioner Tom Grinstad. They both served quite a long time on this planning commission. They both contributed to a number of really important act, actions, legislative actions that the committee took. You guys were around for Fairhaven, the waterfront, the downtown district, probably stuff before that that I don't remember. But, and then everything we've been doing in the, in the interim here with urban villages, the comp plan update. I mean, really, in the past eight years, the city's tackled a ton of stuff. And so, I'm sure, I just want to speak on behalf of everybody. And I think the public should recognize the, the long-term commitment that these two gentlemen put in in volunteering, you know, two week, two weeknights a month for, for eight years is a really long time, and covered a lot of, a lot of ground that kind of shapes how the city grows. So, really appreciate you guys and want to give you a thank you for that. And there's a, there's a six-month moratorium on coming and speaking to us at the podium, okay? It's like lobbying and after you get in Congress, you can't come and lobby us for six months. So, that will adjourn. Thank you.